ACMI productions are only made possible with your support. Visit patreon.com/ACMI to learn how you can help.
Good evening, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on December 4th, 2024. I'm Select Board Chair Steve DeCoursey. Joining me tonight, I'll start with board members to my right.
John Hurd.
Eric Helmut.
Diane Mahan.
Leonard Diggin's.
James Feeny.
Michael Cunningham, Town Council.
Ashley Mar, Board Administrator.
Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with provisions in state law for remote participation in public meetings. Before we begin, please note the following. This meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers, a chili chambers tonight, I might add, and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcasted on ACMI. People wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find out how to do so on the town's website. People participating either in person or by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, we ask you to provide your full name and place of residence in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board Agendas and Minutes page. If technical difficulties sever the remote connection to one or more participants and efforts to reconnect within a reasonable period of time fail, the in-person meeting will continue at the discretion of the chair, provided that a quorum of the board is physically present. Zoom participants are encouraged to retain the phone number provided in their confirmation email for a backup audio connection to the meeting. There will be an opportunity for public participation tonight during the open forum part of the meeting. If you are attending by Zoom and want to participate, please raise your hand when I announce that public comment is open. We don't have a long agenda, but it's an important agenda this evening, so let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. And with that, I will start with the consent agenda, items two and three. Item two is a minute minutes of meetings of November 4, 2024, and November 18, 2024. Item three is a reappointment to the Tree Committee, Keith Schneble, for a term to expire 12/31/27. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Select Board Liaison to the Tree Committee, and I wanted to note that Mr. Schneble did appear come tonight, and I know that typically for reappointments, we just do that without discussion, but he wanted to say a couple of words, and I think if at the chair's discretion, we could remove that item for some brief remarks.
Certainly, I'll remove that from the consent agenda. Mr. Schneble is here if he wants to come up and address the board.
So, thank you. Just, oh, so Keith Schneble, I live at Webb Cowat Road. Arlington, I've been on the Tree Committee for six years. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak very briefly with you guys, and I've been very honored to serve on this committee for these years. I've been working on a vision statement, so I just wanted to sort of try it out on you guys. We envision our town where our urban forest is valued as valued as a public good that provides benefits, economic benefits, environmental benefits, and social benefits for our town. So I'm looking forward to trying to bring this to fruition over the next several years on the Tree Committee, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your interest in continuing to serve.
Thank you. Second.
I didn't move.
Okay. Mrs. Mahan?
I'll second it and say thank you to Mr. Schneble, and appreciate you coming here tonight, and also appreciate how active the Tree Committee has been, not only liaison with our tree warden, but the program today versus six years ago has vastly grown in terms of outreach and public information, and I'm always amazed by how many people are aware of the activities of trees discussed being removed, trees being planted, adopting a tree, and the access on the town website to that, and that's largely in part of this committee working in concert with the town. So I appreciate you being here tonight. I thank you and apologize going forward for all the extra work we'll be sending to your committee. It's kind of like TAC, but we do appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Okay, so a motion for approval by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
It is a unanimous vote. Now we're on to appointments and distinguishing Mr. Schneble's reappointment. First-time appointments, we do ask people to come up, and we appreciate Mr. Schneble coming back and addressing us, but the next four, which will be items four through seven, we will call the individuals up, or if they're joining us through Zoom. And we will start with item four, the Committee on Tourism and Economic Development, also known as ATED, Sarah Raiden, for a term to expire January 31/28. Sarah, okay, she's joining us through Zoom.
Hi, I'm here. My name's Sarah Raiden. Nice to meet you. I'll turn my camera on.
Yep, oh, that's great. Thank you, Ms. Raiden. Yeah, if you could just tell us a little bit about your interest in serving on the Tourism and Economic Development Committee, and thank you for your interest.
Yeah, so my name is Sarah Raiden. I am a Boston native. I moved to Arlington recently, about nine months ago. I live in the Heights, and for me in particular, small business and having like a town I feel great about living in and businesses I can support is so important to me. And ATED was specifically looking for someone with marketing experience. That was one of the things that they were seeking in members. I'm currently a full-time employee at Google. I've worked at Google for 10 and a half years on the marketing and advertising side, and I've been in media and tech my whole career. So I worked in an advertising agency previously, and so when I spoke to Angela, who leads the committee, it felt like I could really make an impact in terms of thinking about how we bring marketing and advertising to the small businesses of Arlington, and both helping businesses themselves and also promoting all that's going on in the community. So I've already started to get involved volunteering with the Small Business Saturday and working on the Arlington 250 website to promote the restaurants of Arlington. So far, it's been a really positive experience, and hopefully this is a way I can continue to invest in the community and give back using the skills I have from my career.
Thank you very much. I'll turn to the board. Mr. Hurd.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. I serve on ATED as well as a board liaison, and it is really a fun committee to be on. It's a good group, and you know, creating tourism and advocating for the wonderful things that we have in town is a lot of work, but it's also an interesting task to undertake, and you're coming on at a very interesting time for ATED, where we're working hand-in-hand with the Arlington 250 Committee, and a lot of events coming up, a lot of work, so we're happy to have another set of hands helping us out. And certainly one of the things that we needed for the 250 was we're going to have to pay for someone with marketing experiences, so hopefully we can get a little free expertise as well.
We'll see what I can do with my free expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggin's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second, and I'll also say that I'm really happy to see about your passion for DEI that you got through your MBA at Kellogg, and so, as we know, it's important, and it makes for a more healthy community, and we could certainly do more outreach, meaning to other communities, meaning to make a lot more people appreciate what Arlington has, and also bring that to Arlington to just add to the diversity here, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. That's something I'm really passionate about. I lead the inclusion pillar for my organization within Google. I spent a lot of time taking classes at Kellogg, and I aspire for Arlington to be a place where everyone feels included, so I hope I can bring that as well. Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you, Mr. Diggin's. Okay, so on a motion for approval by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggin's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you again, and best of luck with the committee.
Thanks for the opportunity, sir.
Item five, LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission, Kealan Henderson, for a term to expire January 31, 2026. Is Kealan what this is? Oh, yep. Good evening.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kealan Henderson. My pronouns are she, they, and I live on Cornell Street, and just very excited to get involved in the Rainbow Commission here. I have just over the past couple of years been getting way more involved in the queer community, and it's something I feel extremely passionate about, and I kind of felt that, especially at this time, there is no better opportunity to get involved locally. I want to engage with the community in a very authentic and real way, and I want the people who live in Arlington to feel that they have a trusted resource, a trusted partner, and just someone that they can turn to and lean on, and I think that this commission opens the doors for a lot of people, a lot of families, and I kind of want to just continue that.
Great, thank you very much. Turn to the board. Mr. Diggin's.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the Select Board Liaison to the Rainbow Commission, I'm happy to make the motion that we accept or that we approve your appointment, and I'm impressed, as always, with the CV. It seems like you do a lot of things at once, like 100 projects at once. I'm really impressed, so if you know, if you get bored, the Rainbow Commission can always use some help on the Town Day Committee, so just letting you know.
Yeah. Excited.
Thank you, Mr. Diggin's. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I happily second that motion, and thank you, and I think that you alluded to this before, but I've been in contact with some town residents that are really worried now after the results of the national election, what's coming next, and I think the one thing I can tell them is that Arlington is a town that welcomes everyone, and one of the ways that we do that most visibly and actively is through the work of the Rainbow Commission. I think you have it exactly right. We're very lucky to have you. Thank you for serving.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. And Mrs. Mahan?
I want to say thank you most sincerely for doing this. I also saw her in there, which I've never seen before, the Speak Out program in Boston.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if you could give three or four sentences in the sense that I just had this past week, and I'm not going to use names or anything like that, but sort of piggybacking on what Mr. Helmut said. One of my former cheerleading dads unfortunately had an incident while riding on the tee that myself, as a heterosexual married woman, I was thinking if I had been there at the time, I would have cuddled up next to him, been as scared as he was, but I was just wondering if you could just give me four or five sentences on Speak Out Boston, and also just note, one of the things with the Rainbow Coalition, LGBTQIA+ Rainbow, is reaching out to that community, but also working on interfacing with others in terms of sharing the experience and also educating others in terms of how to be good citizens, so. But I was really interested in what the Speak Out Boston was.
Speak Out is an awesome organization, and what their focus is, they're actually, I think, also considered one of the, or not maybe the oldest, like, speaking bureau, and they have a just set of volunteer speakers that they train, and those speakers go to different engagements, and these engagements can be with companies, they can be with churches, they can be with towns, libraries, parent organizations. It really spans a very broad spectrum of, yeah, different engagements, and it's an opportunity for their speakers, they just sit and they have an audience, and they tell their story. They don't, it's not really educating on, like, presenting a slideshow of whether it be pronouns or the new policies that are coming through, but it's just an opportunity to say, this is my lived experience. Do you have questions? This is an open place. It's a safe place to ask questions that you may not ask maybe out in public. And yeah, so it's a really, I think it's very unique because it doesn't, it's not trying to promote, I think, like, speaking for everyone. You speak for yourself, you speak for your experience, and you have that chance to just say, like, here's what I've experienced, here's potentially trauma, here's the good stuff, here's the stuff we need to work on, and it, yeah, it's a really good way to engage with different communities and sometimes ones that you might not have interfaced with before.
Thank you. I'm going to make sure I read up on it a little bit more, and maybe there's something like that we can do here.
Absolutely.
Through our commission, because I was just thinking of that. The good thing for my friend is he got about 210 messages of people.
Wow.
For support, and, but a lot of it was, you know, I wish I was there, what should I, what could I have done, stuff like that. So I saw the Speak Out Boston, but thank you, sorry. I didn't mean to digress.
And I will just say too, like, Speak Out Boston, like, those engagements also involve allies, so it's not necessarily just people in the queer community, it's allies as well, so other people have an opportunity to ask questions like that, what could I have done, or what do you suggest, or what has someone maybe done for you in that moment? So that's, yeah, it's a great organization.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd.
Yeah, and I'll just say again, thank you for your willingness to serve. You know, the committees in Arlington, some are very active and some are not, and this one is a time commitment, but the people that are involved in the committee are very passionate about the work they do. They're an amazing group of people on the committee, and you know, thank you for, you know, volunteering your time, which is tight for anyone, but you're obviously very busy in all the hats that you wear, so thank you for volunteering for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd, and I wouldn't want to echo my fellow members, thank you for your interest in serving. So a motion for approval by Mr. Diggin, seconded by Mr. Helmut, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item six, Human Rights Commission, Allison Bennett, for a term to expire June 30, 2027. I believe she's going to be joining us through Zoom.
Hi, everyone. I apologize I'm not able to go on camera. It is 1:30 in the morning where I am currently, so I am sitting outside in the hallway trying not to wake up my fiancee. I'm in Italy for my wedding.
Wow, thank you for your dedication to, willingness to serve here.
No, I actually work for the Department of Homeland Security, specifically within Refugee Asylum and International Operations, so I have been in weirder locations at first times, so this is all par for the course. So my current role, I work for our headquarters, assisting individuals who are stateless, so that there is no determined, there's no country that is claiming them, and I work to assist our components throughout Citizenship and Immigration Services, trying to provide advice to ICE and CDP. I previously worked as Chief of Staff within Refugee International Operations and spent most of last year last summer going around to different refugee camps and working to assist our refugees abroad. I'm very excited for this opportunity to help out on a town and state level, the work that I've been able to do on a federal and international level.
All right, well, thank you for all the work that you do, and I will turn to board members. Mr. Diggin's.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment and to say, it's hard to read these and not end up with an inferiority complex, huh? I mean, it's like, really, you know, I'm really, really very impressed with your CV, and I have to say, you had me at the clause, experience customizing SQL queries within the smart environment. I love SQL. It's kind of like Latin to me, and then on top of that, you have three languages, you know.
I was going to say that, and she speaks three languages.
Three languages, you know. Four, four, yes, include English, you know, and I am interested in the work that you did as a research assistant, but I realize that, I mean, you really need to kind of wrap this up probably quicker, you know, but maybe something we can talk about later on, so thank you so much, you know, for your willingness to work with the group, and so happy to make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Diggin's. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, I'll second that, and second everything that Mr. Diggin said in his praise. Under the constraints of the hallway interview, if you would be able to share kind of what you know now, what you kind of foresee some of Arlington's likely challenges in the coming year or so in human rights, and the kind of work that you might be interested in helping with, if you can foresee that.
Sure. As I'm sure everyone in this room knows, it's going to be a bit of a transition, especially in this field. I wish I had had better news and a nicer way to kind of, to talk about it and frame it, but in terms of the working groups that were discussed previously, you know, I'm very excited to hopefully get a chance to work more in the education field, because I always find that education is certainly the first step towards, you know, assisting and helping others kind of understand what people who are joining as other countries might be feeling and might be going through, and the very lengthy, difficult process that it took for them to get here, you know, if there's any safety concerns, like, these are the individuals who had the most intensive security checks probably in the world. So unfortunately, there's not a lot I could really, this is really talk about in terms of what we do on a federal level, of course, but yeah, I would say I'm most excited to be working and assisting in the education field, and then I know it'd been discussed previously that there might be some assistance in the housing side of things, and I know it sounds boring, but I actually really love looking into like the loopholes and the bylaws and understanding like how it is we can actually assist, so yeah, I can leave it at that.
Great, thank you. We'll be lucky to have you, and please thank your wife for us for sparing you for a few minutes.
That's right, yeah. No, thank you, Mr. Helmut. Yeah, so on a motion for approval by Mr. Diggin's, seconded by Mr. Helmut, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bennett, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
And the next appointment this evening is to the Clean Energy Future Committee, Michael Kozic, Arlington Public Schools representative. Mr. Kozic, I don't know if I'm saying your name properly, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it.
That's good enough, yes, thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. I am the recently appointed K-12 Director of History and Social Studies for the Arlington Public Schools, and before I came to Arlington, I taught in the Newton Public Schools for 25 years, and taught a class called Sustainability for about 15 years, and through teaching that class, I became more and more involved in climate work and environmental justice, and since 2019, I was on the statewide climate coordinating committee at the largest union in Massachusetts, the MTA, focusing on decarbonization of schools. And I also started a nonprofit called Earth Day Boston to recognize the 50th anniversary of Earth Day in the Boston area, and have continued that work since that time. And for the past two years, I've been developing climate curriculum at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, so we are, have developed curriculum for high schools that we are launching throughout the state, and then, of course, it's online, so it's available across the United States and the world, so, and then as part of that work, we've been organizing conferences and workshops, and so I'm excited to take the work that I've done around the state and in Newton and bring it to Arlington and help de-carbonization efforts and make that connection between the town and the schools.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Arlington, sir, your first year here. I will turn to the board.
Move approval. And I'm happy to see that you've promoted Earth Day so much. Earth Day also happens to be my birthday, so I like to celebrate Earth Day each day, each year.
That's great.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Helmut.
I'll second that, I'll just note that Earth Day rhymes with birthday, so if somebody wishes to have a happy Earth Day.
I didn't even know it.
It's about you, right? No, it's my privilege to be the Select Board Member Liaison to the Clean Energy Future Committee, and the work, it's a great bunch of people, and I would like to hear hearing from the fearless leader, Ms. Fox, tonight, but we're really glad for your passion and enthusiasm to help out. I think you'll have a great time, and I look forward to seeing you at our meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mr. Diggin's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I mean, thank you also for serving, and I noticed when reading, although I can't come up with the exact line now, that you had done some work with multiple districts, like six districts, so I'm impressed with that because it means that you really understand the regional approach to things, I mean, so getting the job done here, especially on issues, I mean, that, of course, inherently reach across municipalities, so, yeah, and also I noticed that you work at the visitor center at Fenway Health Center, and that's where my primary is, so that's a great place, so thank you for that work too.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Diggin's. Mrs. Mahan?
First, I want to say to Mr. Kozic, Kozuch?
Kozic.
Kozic, thank you. Congratulations and thrilled that you're sort of a dual role here in terms of serving on the committee and working for Arlington Public Schools, and I saw while you were in Newton for oh so many years that you were also involved with their China Exchange Initiative Program, and we have a sister city, Nagiochio, that has a very good representation down at Arlington High School, so it is in no way part of your requirement volunteering for this committee or working for Arlington Public Schools, but I'm sure if you haven't heard about that already, you will in the future, and I'm really excited by everything that you've done, and I want you to do all of that here and more, as well as celebrate your birthday with Mr. Hurd, so welcome to Arlington and so nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, and on top of everything else, I see you had time to be a flag football coach too.
I saw that it was.
Which is great, and I also noticed the Dorchester Historical Society volunteer experience as well, so thank you for everything you bring to the community, and a motion for approval by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmut, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or a request. I first will open it to anybody in the chambers who wishes to be heard during open forum. Don't see any hands. Anybody on Zoom?
See no hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Hurd, would you like to be heard during?
No, no, I just, clarification, just in case, are you accepting public comment for item number nine?
No, so if anybody wishes to be heard on item number nine, now would be the time to do it. That is more of an update-type presentation, so thank you for that clarification, so if there's anybody who wishes to be heard on number nine, now would be the time to address the board.
Can I ask if I could comment after I hear what the people have to say regarding the plan? Because it may change everything.
Yeah, well, let me just tell you this, we're not taking any vote this evening, we're just basically going to get a status as part of that, so I'm going to still keep the open forum where it is. There's nothing that's going to, if there's a change that requires an amendment or anything like that to the host community agreement, we would have a hearing and an opportunity for you to be heard, so I'd still like to have the open forum period right now.
May I?
Sure, certainly.
Well, we've been going through this process a little bit, as you have as well, for a couple of years now.
If you could just identify yourself for the record.
My name's Michael Walsh, 17 Pine Ave, Arlington.
Thank you.
So we're, you know, it's kind of a little bit of a roller coaster for us, and the neighbors here, some of the neighbors here as well. There was a petition submitted, there was, back in June, regarding people who were objected to it, there was letters and other correspondence written outlining what we found were difficulties with the approval initially, but that's up to other people to decide, and just concerns about, it was kind of like, we didn't know about it until after it was approved. There was no notice, there's nothing in the mail, nothing in the paper, saying, hey, we're going to discuss this subject, which is a pretty big subject for a neighborhood, and we wanted to, so it was a reactionary, and we kind of, kind of felt left out, so I just wanted to, I don't know if this is going to go any further, or if it's, we thought it had gone by the board and was no longer being pursued, according from what we've talked to many people about, within the town and the administration, so we're just trying to, I have more to say if there was something more to say.
I understand.
Okay, so I just wanted to present that there are people here who are concerned, and I'm not sure if they're going to speak or not, but we just wanted to let you know that there are, the neighborhood is concerned.
Okay, no, thank you, and I will say for people who are here, when we get to item nine, I will have a little introduction as to why this is on the agenda tonight, but But again, this isn't something that is on for approval this evening, that, any actions. I just want to let you know that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to be heard? No one here? Anybody on Zoom?
Seeing no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mahan. That, that concludes open forum for this evening. Uh, we are now on to traffic rules and orders and other business. Item eight is a discussion and approval, climate leader communities, decarbonization roadmap. Talia Fox, our sustainability manager. Good evening, Ms. Fox.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I'll be presenting tonight about the decarbonization roadmap that the town must approve in order to apply for certification as a climate leader community. Go to the next slide, please. All right. So the Climate Leader Communities Program is a new program offered by the Department of Energy Resources, or DOER, to supplement the existing Green Communities Program. The Green Communities Program historically has focused on energy efficiency projects and has provided funding in amounts up to $500,000, although the town was only allowed to apply for amounts up to $100,000 recently because we've received over $2 million in the past cumulatively over the history of that program. The new Climate Leader Communities, Communities Program is designed to align better with the state's climate change mitigation goals. It acknowledges that decarbonization activities are more expensive upfront than traditional energy conservation projects, even if they result in savings and benefits over time. Once communities earn certification as a climate leader community, they are eligible for grants of up to $1 million. In order to be certified, communities must meet several criteria. And if we want to be part of the first cohort, we need to meet those criteria and apply by the end of this calendar year. The town has met four out of five criteria. If you could go to the next slide. We have a local energy committee, the Clean Energy Future Committee, as you know, and the, the select board just added a school representative to that committee, which was part of the requirement. We have a commitment to decarbonize our operations by 2050, which was a goal adopted by the select board and memorialized in our Net Zero Action Plan. Today, we'll be discussing the third requirement, the municipal decarbonization roadmap. And the select board and school committee have already adopted a zero emission vehicle first policy this past spring and town meeting adopted the specialized stretch code in spring of 2023. As noted here, the zero emission vehicle first policy and roadmap must both be adopt, but, but must be adopted by both the select board and the school committee. The policy was already adopted by both and I'll be attending a meeting of the school committee tomorrow night about the roadmap. So, next slide. What is the decarbonization roadmap? As I mentioned, the town has committed to a goal of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. The roadmap lays out how we're going to get to that goal and how we're going to eliminate emissions from our facilities and vehicles in that timeframe. It's a tool that will help us prioritize decarbonization projects and it does this by identifying specific implementation measures to meet or exceed the state's interim emissions targets before 2050 using a 2022 baseline. The town was awarded technical assistance to complete the roadmap with the support of a consultant power options. Next slide, please. I'll speak very briefly about the roadmap's contents and I'm happy, uh, in our discussion to go through any specifics of the roadmap that was circulated in advance of the meeting. The buildings, the building section uses a zero over time approach to guide electrification timeframes. This approach leverages what are called trigger events or points when equipment reaches the end of its useful life. Those are the moments when it's going to be most cost-effective to swap out fossil fuel equipment for the electric alternatives. The building's roadmap also directs the town to focus on high-impact buildings or those buildings that emit the most emissions first. Next slide, please. Vehicle section of the roadmap takes a simpler approach, recommending specific EV models to replace internal combustion engine vehicles on timeframes that account for the age of the existing vehicle. This section also accounts for the availability of certain EVs on the market. So for example, heavy-duty trucks are not widely available, uh, as electric vehicles currently for a reasonable cost. And so those costs are expected to come down in future years and replacements of those vehicles therefore are later in the roadmap. Next slide, please. The town's zero emission vehicle first policy adopted this past June supports roadmap implementation by requiring that department directors evaluate and prioritize electric options. The roadmap notes that vehicle replacement, the vehicle replacement schedule is subject to change based on evolving factors. I have reviewed the schedule with various department directors, including the director of DPW, the police and fire chiefs, and I'm working to adjust the list with their feedback. And I will continue to be in conversation with them about what models make sense and in what timeframes. I also acknowledge that we can't electrify our fleet if we don't have charging equipment to charge those vehicles. So an in-depth version of the roadmap that I am happy to make available if, uh, the board would like to see that, it evaluates fleet charging infrastructure locations and equipment types and quantities and provides estimates of cost and anticipated electrical upgrades required for those sites. Next slide, please. I do want to acknowledge that the upfront cost of many of these measures is high at the moment as the market is transitioning. So the goal of leveraging replacement cycles is to minimize the cost to the town so we can avoid costly retrofits down the line. And the data that we have from previous studies we've done demonstrate that lifecycle costs of electric systems are comparable to or better than those of fossil fuel alternatives. That's over the lifetime of those systems. That's because for many of these buildings, we need to add cooling anyway and electric heat pumps provide both heating and cooling. Incentives are substantial right now and operating costs, namely for ground source heat pumps, can be lower. All of that said, we definitely need to evaluate the potential of accommodating building electrification costs outside of the capital plan and that's something that I have been, begun to discuss with the town's finance director, capital planning committee and others. And of course, I'm committed to pursuing all grant funding available to us, um, as possible. So getting certified to the climate leader community is part of that, right? All right. Next slide, please. So to wrap up, I respectfully request that the select board approve this roadmap either today or at its upcoming, uh, December 16th meeting after some discussion today, depending what the board would like to do. And I'll be happy to answer questions today and provide follow-up if there are any modifications to the roadmap that you would like to see before approving it. So assuming I get select board and school committee approval, I'll apply by cert, apply for certification by the end of the year and I'll plan to support the town in updating the roadmap every three years as required by that certification program. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox, and then thank you for the detailed presentation and for the memorandum and, and also for the, um, the roadmap, the, the details, just showing the different sources of the fossil fuel emissions in, in, in the various buildings. And, um, I do want to recognize you and, and, uh, Mr. Fimi and, and the, the entire team because as you said, would, as a green community, we only could do it $100,000 at a time, I think at most. And, um, by my total, you mentioned over $2 million, almost 2.1 million dollars in, in, in grants, which is really impressive. So, um, I appreciate all that work and, and this just is, is the next step, as you said. So I will turn to, uh, board members with any questions or comments. Mrs. Mahan.
First, I'll, uh, move approval of the roadmap. About what you need approval on. Second, uh, th- thank you for all your work on this, as well as the detailed information that you provided us in terms of town and school properties, um, what they are, how they can be addressed and, and what the timeframe should be. You know, not just DPW and schools, the, Ed Burns Arena and, and other things like that, um, which, um, again, would thank you and also the town manager, um, to the town manager, uh, through the town manager, to our department heads, uh, going through those materials. Um, we have been taking steps, um, starting as far back as, you know, 2014 to 2016 to start addressing, uh, where we are here in 2024. So I, I do appreciate that. Just a, a couple of procedural sort of housekeeping, uh, questions. First, I definitely would be interested in, um, the fleet charging locations, um, if that's something either you or the town manager could, I guess, email to the board. Um, and if we have any questions, we could follow up on that or if the chair, um, thinks it should be a future agenda item, that, that would be, um, fine. Um, I don't know if that, if that includes, I think you said it might include, uh, an estimate on possible cost. Um, I don't know if it also includes, if it doesn't, I'm not asking anyone to, uh, take the task on it, cause it sounds like it might be cumbersome. But in terms of if it does include cost, um, perhaps not in the email that sent to us, but obviously as we move forward, um, I noticed in here it said, you know, s- some of these costs, you know, will have to be addressed outside the capital plan. Some of those are going to be hopefully addressed through us qual, submitting by December 31st and qualifying for the program, but I think you said it's only up to $1 million per year. Do you anticipate that that's sort of gonna be a fixed cost in the next, say, five years? Or do you feel that as this program grows and more people go into it, kind of like CPA, do you think it'll, uh, you don't have a crystal ball and you can't predict that?
You're asking about the grant program itself?
Yes.
I am, I'm not certain about whether the funding will increase in the future. I would imagine that it might, just given that more communities might be applying for the opportunity and might be getting certified as time goes on, similar to how the Green Communities Program has expanded dramatically over the years. So yes, I, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but I, I suspect that might be the case. I think ultimately, you know, a million dollars for a building decarbonization project is, is not going to cover the full cost. And so we're going to have to get creative about how we're, how we're funding that and I'll be seeking other grant sources as well, um, through the state and possibly federal government, um, depending what's available. So I hope that answers your question.
And, um, as we move forward, and I don't know if this, again, is a question you can answer tonight because we're at the beginning of, of this, along with other, uh, cities and towns in, in the state, country, et cetera. Um, but one of the things, sort of like our automatic doors in front of town hall or our elevator, that, um, unfortunately, it was only one company that could fix it in Australia or wherever the heck they were. So it took like five years. So going forward, um, may not be in, information you have now, but going forward as we convert our fleet and, and other, uh, capital purchases, um, one of the things that I know the town manager yourself and other department heads will also need to address and be looking into is maintenance repair, um, whether that's in-house, which requires a special, either augmenting the labor force we have, hiring, uh, a separate kind of, uh, labor force intensivist in that area, or if, um, we anticipate that, um, neither can be accomplished in-house, which means we have to go to outside facilities, uh, companies or programs, just sort of moving forward, you know, what is available for that. Cause my only, not my only concern, but a concern would be, um, as we start out, there's gonna be some, pardon, pond bumps in the road. But, uh, that, that's something that I definitely want to be interested in, in the sense of to get ahead of it. If it's gonna be, right now, it's not something we have on staff, we need to go outside, there's only three companies in the state of Massachusetts that can do that. How, how are we gonna address that going forward? And then the last sort of housekeeping question that I had was, I think I read in here, this needs to be, uh, reviewed and renewed every three years. I assume that's by the same two entities, the school committee and the select board? Or no?
So...
Or did I misread that? I thought I read something that every three years it has to be. Cause the reason I, I'm saying that is, one of the things I was gonna ask or make a suggestion, which you don't have to do, if it is every three years, um, and it is by the end of that calendar year, maybe to have it as an agenda item a month or two before the actual renewal date in case there's, um, as we move forward, I assume there's gonna be more information available. Um, and I just wouldn't want to spring something on, um, if it's every December and it has to be done by December 31st and we get something that, you know, you would have appreciated having four to six weeks, uh, lead time versus, um, we're asking you to do something and, you know, we have to add it to another meeting or something like that.
Interesting.
So the question is, is it every three years? Is it the select board and school committee? And that, the, the last thing I spoke to, that's just for you and the town manager to decide.
So it is every, every three, three years we will have to revisit the roadmap. I am not certain what, and I don't actually think that the, the program has defined yet what the recertification process is going to look like. It's certainly possible it could require recertification in front of the board, but I could also see a scenario where it's, um, kind of similar to the Green Communities Annual Reports, where we're simply submitting updates and, um, reports directly to the, to the DOER. So, uh, the answer is I'm, I'm not certain what the process will look like yet, but I, I also acknowledge the point that earlier is better than, than later. And, and I do apologize if this feels at all rushed to receive this, um, kind of close to the end of the year. So thank you, thank you all for the speedy approval of this.
Yeah, no, and by no means it's a reflection on you because unfortunately you had to wait, um, to forward on to us, um, the, the final detailed information, um, that we got, which you didn't have any control over. So, um, I, you know, you were kind of put in that box. I'm, I'm just saying going forward. And I'm glad you're saying that it's not defined, cause I was reading it and I'm like, it says three years, but I couldn't find anything else on it, but it hasn't been defined. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very happy to second, um, Ms. Mahan's motion to approve this. And, um, it's a great document. I think it was well worth waiting for. I, I mean, you know, there's so much detail in it and I think that's, really represents an important opportunity for the town that the process itself of going through this forced us to take, to dig up a lot of information. I can see in this how, you know, you had to talk with so many departments and, and engage them in this conversation. And I think that when you do that and you, this is a baseline, right? And we, we can then measure, you know, we can set goals and we can talk the pretty language about, about, um, net zero, uh, goals that we're gonna get to, but this is a roadmap we're gonna get to. And it also makes it very practical that, you know, we have, um, different kinds of vehicles, different kind of buildings with various challenges, but they're all itemized here. And, um, I don't know if you've ever seen a spreadsheet with every vehicle that the town owns and operates here, but you know, but that's, that's the level of detail that we need to do for this to be a pragmatic exercise. So, uh, so just want to tip the hat to that. I think that's a job really well done and, um, we're very grateful for your leadership as always in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Uh, Mr. Diggins.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And, uh, I, as, um, as with, um, Mrs. Mahan, I'm interested in seeing, you know, the, um, recommendations, I mean, for the, the charging. And I appreciate your talking, um, with me, you know? I can't believe I didn't talk about this then, you know? Because as you know, I'm very interested in, um, charging, you know, EV charging because, I mean, I have, I have ideas about what we can do about EV charging, you know? So it'll be interesting to see if we can kind of piggyback on this and really, I mean, do some, some great things for the town, you know, um, with, um, uh, nice, um, fleet charging infrastructure. And, um, and, and so, um, so yeah, thanks, um, for, for all the work that you've done. And, and I'll just add that I know that, I mean, some members of the young Arlington Collaborative, I mean, they, the world of you and, uh, and Mr. Morgan, you know? So you all do really good work and, and, um, so happy to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Hurd.
Mr. Diggins, maybe in the, in the next version, we'll include automated vehicles on the, on the town side.
Well, well, this is shared. This is shared vehicles. I mean, now automated, I mean...
Don't get me started. Don't get me started.
Don't get him started.
No, I thank you for the presentation. I had an opportunity to sit down with Ms. Fox and go over all my questions last week. And, um, it's certainly a very detailed document and it encapsulates what the priorities of the town are, but it also gives some flexibility for town department heads where, you know, certain recommendations aren't feasible. So I think it, it really is a good roadmap for our department heads and town manager to use to get to our goals. And it, you know, it's practical application also is, you know, user-friendly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Yeah, I also want to echo the comments of, uh, other board members. Um, you, we want to be leaders in the, in, in this effort and, and you're really helping us to do that and as we transition from a green community to a climate, uh, leader, uh, with the adoption hopefully of the, of the roadmap. One, one question and, and maybe something to think about, not looking for an answer tonight, but as I look at the, the various facilities, the one building, we own all of them with the exception of the Ed Burns Arena because the unique relationship with all of them, with the exception of the Ed Burns Arena, because the unique relationship with the state, perhaps there's an opportunity there that the town's goals and the state's goals can align and, and really thinking in terms of funding for the future. But I think, I don't see any others that are uniquely situated like that. Am I, am I right on that, or? Yeah. Okay, so that, that may be one, because, and again, it's, it's, it's a busy, it uses a lot of energy, and so it's maybe an opportunity there. Okay, so on a motion for approval by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Helmut, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, is approved. Good luck tomorrow night at the school committee.
Thank you.
We're easy compared to them.
Okay.
Famous last words.
Is item nine for review and discussion, host community agreement, Calix Peak of Massachusetts. Do want to give a couple of introductory comments, and after I speak, I don't know if Mr. Feeney wants to, to add a few points as well, but this came out of a discussion that we had as a board, probably about a month ago, maybe a little bit more, in the context of our package store licenses and this one host community agreement for Calix Peak, and we are going to address a situation with a package store license next in, in item 10. But we're at a stage where nothing was happening on the licenses, and we're at a point, at least on the package store side, that there was a renewal that would be coming up, and we wanted more information. Now, as far as Calix Peak is concerned, we entered a host community agreement with Calix Peak in February of 2022, and one of the unique things about this whole situation is the host community agreement is entered, and then the applicant still has to go to the Arlington redevelopment board and get through that process and get through the licensing process before the Cannabis Control Commission. And it is, and people in the audience know this, but there was a special permit application for 251 Summer Street that was pulled. We have, still have the host community agreement in existence, and so we wanted an update as to what was going on, because this, this document was signed by town manager Chapit Lane back in 2022. It assumed certain things were going to happen, and if they didn't happen, that the host community agreement might be terminated. And so that's what we're here for tonight, an update as to where things stand, where Calix Peak is relative to other redevelopment board and the Cannabis Control Commission. So before I turn to them, I know they have a couple representatives here this evening. I'm going to turn to Mr. Feeney, if there's anything more you want to add by way of background.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you encapsulate well sort of the history here, and it just seemed like the appropriate opportunity, given that the special permit application was withdrawn just over a year ago now. It seemed like the appropriate opportunity to invite representatives from Calix Peak to provide an update to the board, so we can see what the current status is, and perhaps do a sort of a forward-looking projection about what to expect.
Great. Thank, thank, Mr. Feeney. And I see there, there are two representatives here from Calix Peak. If you could just introduce yourselves, and, and then we will ask you for an update.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Peter D'Agostino, Tedx Strategies, 100 Franklin Street, Boston, Massachusetts. It's great to be back before the board. I see many familiar faces, and I see Mr. Chairman, I think when we started, you were the chairman, and, and Mr. Hurd, and I'm glad to see you're back. So I appreciate the board welcoming us back. Also joining me is the chief operating officer for Calix Peak, which is Tyler, who you should be able to see on your screen. I, I agree with Mr. Feeney. I thought now was a good time to provide the board an update. We did, as you've mentioned, submit some, an application to the town. The landlord had subsequently requested some changes to that document, which caused us to withdraw the application. But we do have the updated documents. I'd be happy if the board and you, Mr. Chairman, find it appropriate to show you the updates. We have some renderings that I think may be helpful for people to see what it might look like, understanding that it still has to go through the ARB, and there could be changes during that process. So I don't, you know, I confuse the issue, but if you have, if you'd like to see kind of where we are today and the work we've put into this so far, we're happy to share it. And as to the public's comments, certainly there will continue to be public involvement in this process, as you mentioned, both through the ARB. We'll have another community outreach meeting in accordance with the Cannabis Control Commission regulations. So we're certainly not done, but we've made a lot of progress since we were last before the town and, and working, well, I guess we weren't working with the ARB, but in submitting the application at town, we've made a lot of progress since then. So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll share my screen and give you a view of it, if, if that's appropriate.
Mrs. D'Agostino, maybe if I could interrupt you, I mean, really, again, what we're, we're looking for here, and we don't approve the design, we're, we're past that stage here before the board. We really want to know, when are you going before the redevelopment board again, one, and two, what is the status of any application or any interaction you've had with the Cannabis Control Commission? Because our agreement contemplated that you needed all necessary local and state approvals, and the way the host community agreement works, I'll turn to Attorney Cunningham if there's anything that we need, need to add here, but we entered into an agreement, which was the first step. It assumed that you would then get your approvals, and if you couldn't get your approvals, the, you'd be unable to perform under the agreement, and the agreement would have no further effect. So
Right.
as, as a board here, we're at a point where we're looking at it, and it's going to be three years in February, and, and we've been getting questions, and you can see the concerns that were raised earlier this evening. At a certain point, you either get your approval or, or it's over, and the agreement ends, and there's no further obligations, at least with the, with respect to the host community agreement. So if you could just give us an idea of what, if anything, you have resubmitted to the redevelopment board. We don't need the presentation, because we don't vote on it, and, and what, if anything, has happened with the Cannabis Control Commission? And the third thing I'd ask you is if, I, I know you have created a couple of different entities, and I believe you're operating in Swampscut, but this agreement, the host community agreement, was between Arlington Town and Calix Peak of Mass. I also note that I see a Calix Peak of Mass Arlington that is an LLC too. If that's the case, you've got to come back to us and notify us that there's been an assignment. So if you could just update us as to where you are locally and at the state level?
Yep. No, I appreciate that. Thank you for the context. As it relates to the ARB, as Mr. Feeney mentioned, we withdrew the application based on request by the landlord. We subsequently made those changes. We finalized those changes over the last couple of weeks, and we anticipate that we'll be filing, refiling or filing a new application, quite frankly, before the ARB within the next couple of weeks. Certainly, our hope is to have that before the end of the year. That's what we're anticipating. The documents have been completed. We're just waiting for the final sign off by the landlord, and we will be able to submit those to the ARB at that time or to the, to the planning. As it relates to CCC, it's, it's an editor of processes, as you may remember. So we would go through the ARB process, and assuming that that approval was received, or whatever the final approval was received, we would then complete the licensing process before the Cannabis Control Commission. So they do get bookend a little bit, and what I mean, what I mean by that is it's somewhat one after the other. So that's the process. The next step is to finalize the application with the ARB, which we expect to do over the next couple of weeks. Go before that board, go through that process. As you know, we may have changes throughout that process, certainly meet with the neighbors at public hearing. Subsequent to that, we will transition back to the CCC process, which would include another community outreach meeting, and then finalization of that provisional license. So those would be the local and state steps in, in the next couple of orders. As to the entity, they did form a new entity. There's not been any assignment to that entity. They, it's still Calix Peak of Massachusetts. There's some discussion as to whether or not we would, you know, assign it, and as you know, come back to the board if we were to do that. So there is a filing before the Secretary of State, but there's not been an assignment of any rights from Calix Peak of Mass to Calix Peak of Mass Arlington.
Okay. And, and another question, just having to do with the relationship with the landlord. Is there a lease now that's in effect, or is that, are you still negotiating terms?
There is not a lease in effect. No, we're still negotiating the filed terms.
There is not, or there is?
Is not.
Is not, okay. Okay, all right. Well, yeah, Mrs. Mahan?
If I could just piggyback on one of your questions, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for my naivete on this, so whether, an answer for Mr. D'Agostino and/or our town council regarding the last point you raised of the entity of Calix Peak of Massachusetts now with an LLC. My question is, if it's an appropriate question for me to ask, when you initially applied and submitted your application to the board, which also defined your entity and who the participants' principles were, whether individuals and/or other related entities, companies, with this new Calix Peak of Mass LLC, my first question would be, if I can ask this, if it's appropriate, is what the board received in terms of representations of who the, the participants' owners, et cetera, are still the same, or have they changed?
I would have to look back to what we submitted, so I want to be careful to not just give you a blanket yes, but we have had a change at the CEO level. One of the founders, Howie, Howard Klum, who was disclosed in the original filing, has taken over as CEO. So from that perspective, at the CEO level, we've had a change, but that was previously an employee, and now the CEO position is being filled from one of the founders, who was disclosed as part of the application. So I believe the ownership structure that we previously provided by the, to the board, to the town, quite frankly, is, is the same. So there was a change in employee, but I don't believe there's been a change in ownership, and I can confirm that, and I want to confirm that for, for you. So, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, if I could, Mrs. Mahan, and, and my understanding, you had a, a different CEO on the initial presentation, then there was a second CEO. She's no longer with the company, but all along it has been Calix Peak of Mass. The entity has remained the same, to my understanding?
Correct.
I, I guess I would ask the chair and/or town council. Maybe you already have an answer to, I think my question's really nebulous, but out there, if I could ask town council?
Sure.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Mrs. Mahan, I'm not sure what question you can ask, but I just wanted to note that the, the host community agreement is with Calix Peak of MA Inc., which remains an existing corporation with the Massachusetts Secretary of State Corporation website.
And my question would be, if Calix, Calix Peak, the application that they submitted to us, if any of those entities, persons have changed, even if it's as Mr. D'Agostino is saying, well, it's changed, but it really hasn't, because they were kind of on there, if they were, as an employee, but now there's a CEO, is that something that we, I can ask and say that the select board, we need to see your new application if, A, participants have changed, or even B, if the participants' positions have changed?
Mr. Chair.
Attorney Cunningham?
Typically, under contract law, that would not matter. I'd have to, I'd want to review the Cannabis Control Commission regulations to see if there's anything in there that might speak to that issue. I'm just not sure of that.
Okay, so and then, so I'd just leave it with Mr. D'Agostino, because he said he wanted to clarify anyways. If there's anything, it's not, it sounds like right now it's not anything that you have to do, but for my own edification, because all of us look at those, whether it's on a common victual, or whether it's financial interest, whether it's history with financial institutions, definitely like to know all that, so that if anything, moving forward, it, it just keeps us better informed. And I, I would never want to say, well, yes, something happened, something did change, I didn't ask about it, so I, I don't really know, and maybe I should have done that as part of my job. But it, it sounds like right now it's not something you're required to do, so I'm not saying that it is, but if, if it's something you could do, I'd appreciate it, but I won't hold it against you either way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And before I turn to other members, one thing that does concern me, based on the answer, Mr. D'Agostino, on, on the lease, I, I know, you know, officers can come and go within an organization, but one of the things that we did look for when we made, when we evaluated these for host community agreements was control of the site. And, you know, the fact that there isn't a lease here concerns me, because that is something I would want to check to see what the status was at the time that you came before us. At that point, maybe it was a letter of intent, and maybe not a lease, but that, that's a critical aspect here, because it, it's, at least for our agreement, it was 251 Summer Street, and again, it was conditioned on you going to the redevelopment board. And again, just for the public's benefit, the way this was set up with the retail marijuana establishments is that a select board would enter a host community agreement. That agreement would not become effective until a special permit was granted, in this case by the, by the redevelopment board, and a license issued by the Cannabis Control Commission. So we were the first stop, hardly the, the last stop, and, and the zoning bylaw, section 8.3, has the standards for marijuana uses and the environmental review special permit that is required, and the only limitation in the zoning bylaws, it can't be more than three in the town of Arlington. So I think, again, we've only heard from Mr. Mahan. I don't know if the other members want to ask any questions here, but we're concerned about disagreement, because it's starting to feel very stale to us in terms of how long it's been out there, in terms of what you're doing with the, with the redevelopment board, and what the relationship is with the landlord. So that's why we had you come in here and give us the update. But the clock's ticking here, and at a certain point, we're going to be beyond what could be considered a reasonable time for pursuing this. Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And perhaps a further response to Mrs. Mahan's question as well, and for the benefit of the public pursuant to that, as you spoke about earlier, Mr. Chair, pursuant to the agreement, the host community agreement that was signed by the parties in March of 2022, the operator agreed that they, quote, "shall be responsible for obtaining all necessary licenses, permits, and approvals required for the operation of its marijuana establishment, and shall work cooperatively and in good faith with the town in securing the prompt and efficient siting, planning, permitting, and preparation for the opening of its marijuana establishment," which I, end quote, which I think speaks to Mrs. Mahan's question about continuity within, within the organization, and the prompt and efficient siting of that establishment would allow for, perhaps, that continuity, whereas typical contract law would just matter who the parties are, and in this case, you know, it is Calix Peak of Mass, of MA Inc. is the signatory to that host community agreement.
Thank, thank you, Attorney Cunningham. Any other members? Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question for, for Mr. D'Agostino, and then a follow-up to the chair. Just wanted to clarify my understanding of the, of the process with the license from the Cannabis Control Commission. I know that you said that, that, you know, the, your process you would pursue would be, get the special permit from, from the redevelopment board first, and then license. And I guess my question is, is that, is that an optional sequence for you, or is it, or that you cannot get the license from the CCC until you have the special permit?
That's probably a little bit of a question. There's a section within the application which asks for your plan to remain compliant with local ordinances. Almost depending on the reviewer, you could submit a plan to get a special permit, and they could consider that. We typically prefer to get the special permit and submit that as part of our plan to remain compliant with local zoning. So it's, it's not a black and white, yes, you're required, no, you're not required. But generally speaking, having the special permit at the time of submittal is a stronger position, because the Cannabis Control Commission requires us to attest to how we're going to remain compliant with local zoning and ordinances, and we, we don't actually know what the conditions of the board will be until we receive them. So we could certainly draft a narrative for the commission to consider, but our preference would be to know what conditions the ARB would place on the special permit, so we could speak to those more appropriately as part of our application. But it's not black or white. It doesn't say you need it or don't need it. That's, that's, it doesn't live that way in, within the regulations. It lives more in the way I just described it.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's helpful. I appreciate the insight there. Question, thank you, sir. A question for the, for the chair, and I think you can decide who answers this, just because I don't have the host community agreement in front of me. With respect to the clock that you mentioned, Mr. Chair, could you give, eliminate me on, on the provisions in that agreement, and when the clock runs out, and, and what that looks like?
Yeah, I, I can start, and there, there's no timetable in the agreement, okay? And Mr., Attorney Cunningham did discuss that, that there was an agreement that, that Calix Peak would work cooperatively in good faith, and in good faith with the town in securing the prompt and efficient siting, planning, permitting, and preparation for opening of its marijuana establishment. When this was signed back in 2022, there was no deadline that was put in, and that, that, that was before Attorney Cunningham's tenure here with, with, with the, with the town. I don't know if you wanted to add anything further to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just say that section 10, 10 of the agreement probably shed some light, additional light on that, Mr. Helmut, that talks about the term of the agreement, which is five years commencing from the date which is five years commencing from the date that the MRE first opens the public for retail sales. However, if 10C indicates that if the town could terminate the agreement for breach of the conditions contained herein, if they remain uncured for 60 days from the date of notice of such breach. So to the extent there was not, there isn't compliance with Section 2A of the agreement, that could potentially be implicated through 10C.
Okay. So if I understand, Mr. Chair, thank you, sir. The standard here is not a date, but it's a reasonable standard with what the, what prompt is?
That's right. And again, what was contemplated here, if there was an approval and the location opened and began sales, there was a sales commencement date.
Yeah.
And the term was five years after that sales commencement date. But as Attorney Cunningham mentioned, Section 10 did talk about the agreement being terminated. One grounds for termination would be revocation of the license by the Cannabis Control Commission. We don't have a license yet. The other would be the operator's voluntary or involuntary cessation of operations. Well, it hasn't started yet. And then the third is the town's termination of the agreement for breach of conditions. Now, that's where we get into this reasonable time. And again, we're not here tonight to say what the reasonable time is. But I want to make the message. We're feeling like we're just about there if we haven't passed it already. So that's why we wanted to get the update. Anything further, Attorney Cunningham, that you wanted to add on that?
No, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
That's a very helpful answer to my question. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further from the board? Okay, that's all we really, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Diggins.
Oh, Mr. Diggins, I'm sorry.
That was me.
I was going to say it's you.
Sorry about that, you know? So, Mr. Cunningham, if it's okay for me to ask this question? If it's not, let me know. So I know that you want to open up as soon as possible. When do you anticipate being able to open?
Our hope is, our targeting is June, just because we're doing substantial construction on this building as we previously submitted to the town. So we think the construction schedule will be relatively lengthy. So that's our hope, is June. But it's a very substantial project as it relates to this building. It gets completely redesigned. There's quite a bit of work, parking lots, curb appeal, landscaping. I think folks, when they see it, are going to be very happy with the design. I hope, certainly. We're trying to do that. And I'm happy to speak to the discussion with the chairman to the extent you want me to. But I guess the message I'll say back is, we're hearing you loud and clear. We have been working with some of the departments. We understand there's been some time gap between that occurring. And we anticipate to reengage with the ARB very, very quickly. But your message is heard loud and clear. And I just want you to know that we acknowledge that. And to the extent you want me to address any comments, I'm happy to do that as well. But I just want to say, we are hearing you loud and clear. We understand the concern, for sure.
And I just want to say, and maybe just speaking for myself because, again, we're not going to take a vote on anything here this evening. But I appreciate the fact that you came here, gave us the update. There is information that you've provided to us that I know, I plan on talking to Attorney Cunningham a little bit further, just in terms of what we initially approved and whether there's something that comes back to the board. I don't know. But I appreciate you letting us know where you stand. And hopefully, we've made a little bit clearer for the public in terms of where we were with this agreement executed a few years ago. The next stop is over at the redevelopment board, which was in a stop previously, but it will be another stop evidently rather soon. So, Mrs. Mahon?
Just two things. One, I just want to clarify that this is in no way landed upon the Arlington Redevelopment Board. They've always been very responsive when they've received requests. So I don't want to leave anyone with the feeling that they've been a player in this in terms of how long that it's taken because that's not the case. And then the second would be, okay, thank you. I just wanted to put.
Yep, no, 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 you're absolutely correct. Claire and the rest of the staff has been very responsive. So we greatly appreciate the town's responsiveness to our submittals. Absolutely.
Thank you. And I'd ask the town manager to pass that along. And then my second thing is, just because the court reporter in me wants to do it, I see that Mr. Pugh is here. I was just wondering if he could just, you know, for the public record, introduce himself and if there's anything for eight, 10 sentences, whatever you'd like to add to the discussion, if that's okay, Mr. Chair?
That's fine, Mrs. Mahon. And yeah, even if you want to do four sentences, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Tyler Pugh. I am the COO of Calix Peak. I am on the Board of Directors as well. My address is 14930 Smithville, or Industrial Drive, Smithville, Missouri. And I think, to put this into a nutshell for everyone here, we really appreciate everyone's participation in this. And obviously, this has gone on longer than we would like. But we're putting in a lot of effort right now with the landlords to make sure that we can come up with a contract that works for both parties. And I think we're really right there at the one-yard line right now. And I personally feel like we're in a much different position in terms of advancing this forward than we have been in the past. But as Peter has said, we hear the feedback from the board and the members of the community. And we anticipate to try to move this along very quickly, as fast as we can to complete this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahon. I will say that one constant through all the appearances from Calix Peak has been Mr. D'Agostino, even from the initial application back in 2019, when we approved two other licenses. Okay, anything further from board members? All right, well, that concludes this agenda item. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all very much. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you, members of the board. Have a great evening.
It's about 50 degrees difference between the room today than 2019.
Oh, my lord.
Yeah, exactly.
I remember that.
Okay, so now, Item 10 for review and discussion, Package Store License Located at 80 Broadway. We had discussed this previously because the Monomy Beer and Wine location at 80 Broadway, the site had been torn down. And now there is an apartment building with retail on the first floor. We wanted an update in terms of what the intent was of the owner of Monomy Beer and Wine because we're getting up to renewal time. We received a letter today from the president, Mary Parente, am I saying? Parente? Mary Parente. I just want to read the first two sentences of it anyway. We will make this part of the record, but it just came in this afternoon. And we renew Package Store License, come victual licenses on an annual basis. And Monomy Beer and Wine was just, it hasn't been open for a long while until we made inquiry. And so Ms. Parente had written to us, "Dear members of the select board, we'd like to thank the select board for your patience with our situation. Sadly, Monomy Beer and Wine has no plans to continue. We did not apply for the 2025 liquor license renewal and do not plan to. Furthermore, we have no lease in place and no plans to attain one." There's different reasons that were given in the letter. And she closes by saying, "Thank you for your assistance over the years. That Monomy Beer and Wine was part of the Arlington community." So we appreciate her writing to us. Sorry about the circumstance that they are not going to continue, but we needed to have that by the end of the year. So with that, unless there's any comments, I will move on to the next agenda item. Okay. Item 11 for approval, Outdoor Dining and Retail Permit, updated application. And I just wonder, who is presenting on? Is it?
I can present.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Mrs. Mahon.
Before the board is the updated outdoor application for dining. And we are looking, we've made some changes to the application. We've sent it to legal for their review and recommendation. And we have gotten feedback from Jaclyn. We're not making any legal changes to the application, but more just user-friendly and a better application as a whole. We're looking to send this out immediately as part of the renewals and end of the year. If you look, we have the old application. This is the new application before the board first. And then the old application is following. Some of the changes we've made are, on the front page, the fees were not visible. So nobody knew how much we actually owed for your outdoor seating application. There were a number of things that we didn't, weren't included, including insurance. People were confused about the layout, what they had to submit. So we've kind of condensed it and made it a little bit more user-friendly and easier for people to follow. We, a lot of times, would get the application and people would hand it back empty and say, like, we did it. And it was not complete. So through Jaclyn's expertise and reading over it, it is ready for the board's approval. Again, there's no substantial changes other than, you know, more user-friendly before the board. That's about it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Mahon. Mr. Feeney?
The only thing I would add, thank you, Mr. Chair, is that the application is more comprehensive, you'll note. And, you know, I applaud the select board office team for incorporating a number of the best practices that we've been developing over the years in terms of how we've enforced compliance or we've been asked to interpret things. This application now calls out those specific things so that they are upfront and transparent for applicants what our expectations are. And I will note that, too, you know, the board staff did a significant amount of work to review applications in other communities to see, you know, sort of try to strike the right balance with collecting enough information, but also not make the application process too onerous or intimidating, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney, and thank you, Ms. Mahon, for all the work on this.
I will note that, sorry, I will note that we did have two separate applications as well. If you were applying for a parklet or if you were applying for sidewalk cafe, we have condensed those. You'll see on one of the pages, number five, it asks what kind of outdoor you're requesting. So it will say if you're facade seating, if you're located on the street, if you're located, you know, kind of all of it is now condensed into one application, that is, easily.
And the departments that are necessary? For example, if you have a propane heater, you need the fire department's approval. Okay, Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say real quickly, thank you. Hopefully, these changes are both more clear for the public, but also provide the town with the maximum amount of protection possible. And I want to thank Deputy Town Council Munson for her work on this.
Thank you, Attorney Cunningham. And thank you, Attorney Munson, too, for your work. Okay.
Move of approval?
Okay.
Second, one question.
Yes, Mrs. Mahon.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I could add. And thank you to Attorney Munson for all her efforts on this. Am I correct in assuming that on page three, where it lists under Section 2, insurance, since I don't see any red line entries, that with the exception of reformatting and combining, there are no changes? Just because I didn't really go into reading. I know it says later on, under the application, it has a clause that says you need to include in your insurance indemnification or listing the town in terms of liability or indemnification. But my question is, number two, insurance, there were no substantive or any kind of changes to that?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Because I didn't really go into it because I already spent that time last time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahon. And Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, under revocation, number four, it says, "A notice of intent to revoke an ORR permission shall be given in writing days prior." So do we want, like, a number of days there?
That's up to.
Mr. Diggins, just, where are you speaking specifically?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. You know, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up, I mean, earlier. It's on page four, under revocation, number four.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. A missing number.
There is a number of days, yeah. So good catch there.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't get back to you earlier. I called and discussed some other things. I mean, when you first sent out the notice about it, and then it just fell off my radar, you know? So I guess you say it's up to us to determine, I guess, the number of days?
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just say that Mr. Diggins' suggestion, I think, is a good one. I think that's an omission there. I think it looks like a carryover from the prior application. But I think it's a good catch. And I think I would recommend that the board consider inserting a specific number at that point.
Okay. So, yeah, so, I mean, we've got to at least give a couple of weeks anyway. I mean, is 14 days too soon, or is it, it's? I didn't know. If you had a number in mind, Mr. Diggins?
No, I didn't have a number in mind, you know? So I guess if I was going to pick a number, it'd be 30. You give them a month, you know? Well, it's like really generous if you're going to kind of, for revocation. And so like, you know, if you can't do it in 30, you know, then we bring the hammer down, you know, hard, you know? But, so if I had to pick a number.
Pick 30.
But I hadn't, I hadn't really thought.
Yeah, Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. Chair, thank you. From a legal perspective, I think 30 days is fair and sufficient.
Yeah, absolutely. I was just looking, I'm glad you caught that, though. So 30 days is, if, Mr. Hurd, we can take that as a friendly amendment to the.
So amended.
Okay. Okay, so with that amendment, any further questions or discussion?
So I do have a question. And this is not going to be a recommended change. I was just, what was the rationale for 250, I mean, for the parking? For taking the parking?
That was brought before us and the board when the economic development coordinator at the time, that was just a recommendation as.
Yeah, I'm sure I was here for it, too. I just don't remember what it was. I was just kind of, so I was just trying to get a sense of the value of the.
They were moving parking spaces. So I don't know if it was to accommodate losing the parking in the meters. But there is no actuality of.
Yeah.
Or reasoning behind the number that I'm aware of.
Fine, fine. And then the last question is, with respect to the amount of sidewalk space, where do they find out how much space they need to make sure it's clear? I mean, for pedestrians on the sidewalk?
We, when they submit it to us, we send it to various departments for their approval.
Yeah.
They would, they would tell us if it was not in accordance with pass, through, or four.
That's what I thought. Okay, all right, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins, and thank you for catching that.
And on that point, if I could, Mr. Chair or Attorney Cunningham, am I correct? I'm not going to be able to find it now. But when I read it, we do, or Ms. Mar, we do lay out there certain instances in terms of designation of feet, whether it's within a handicap ramp, a fire or police call box, or other things like that. a handicap ramp, a fire, a police call box, or other things like that. That's still in there, because that was there in the.
See the note in my head?
You're all saying yes.
That's correct, yes.
So that somewhat answers that. But but, okay, because it was in there last time. So I'm assuming it's in there this time. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, Attorney Cunningham?
I think it's Section 1E, row number 3.
Okay. Thank you. Glad my memory's still. That should be a test if you could still be on the board. Can you remember Section 1B? No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, so thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So on a motion for approval by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With the proof, thank you for your work on that, Ms. Mahan, and Attorney Munson as well, Attorney Cunningham. Okay, next is new business. Ms. Mahan?
The only new business I have is that the warrant opens tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
Great, thank you. And just for everybody's benefit, it opens tomorrow and closes.
January 31st. It's the last Friday in January of next year.
Great, thank you. Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess on that topic, there is a civic engagement workshop tomorrow night with Mr. Diggins hosting. And I'll be there. So if anyone's interested in talking about the process or potential warrant article thoughts, looking forward to that event tomorrow night.
Thank you, Attorney Cunningham. And Mr. Feeney?
No new business.
Mr. Diggins?
I just want to make it clear that the the fourth annual warrant article workshop is going to be with Mr. Cunningham. I'm just there hosting and facilitating. But he will be answering all the questions, because I don't want people thinking that I'm going to be giving the answers, me, to the questions about me, the which should be in the articles. So so and so my my other new business is regarding special speed restrictions. So a month or two ago, we approved the removal of the special speed restrictions on Park and and Park Avenue, Broadway. In the TAC recommendation, it was that we would take them all down, you know. But we didn't know how things would go with Mast dot. So the anticipation was that we would have to figure out the Mast dot process. And so rather than sending them all to Mast dot, we would just send two. It went very fast, you know. And so so we are ready, you know, to submit the rest, you know. Me, I looked at the minutes, me, and it the minutes technically said, me, Park and Broadway, you know. And so either we can put it on the agenda, hopefully, me, for for next week, if we need, just for a quick vote to resend them all. Or we could, me, say that, given the spirit of the TAC recommendation was to take them all down, and we're pretty much in agreement with that, we could just move forward with that. I'll do whatever it takes. I'll do whatever the group wants. Me, we can have we'll have the ready the letter ready to go, me, in 12 days or whatever, so that if we vote for it, we can do it. If we don't feel that we need to vote for it, then we can just, me, give that to you and you can sign it. So I don't know if we are deliberating at this point, means I don't want to like get.
Yeah, so what I would say is, I you and I can talk about this.
Yeah.
Outside the meeting, and maybe we talk to Mr. Feeney and Attorney Cunningham, and then bring it back, because we aren't deliberating on this. This wasn't on the agenda, I think.
Right, right, right.
But we you and I can have a discussion about this between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Mahan?
Just very briefly, I know that the town has put out a press release, Arlington Police Department, along with the District Attorney Marion Ryan regarding the gentleman, even though the name is public, I haven't don't know that the family necessarily wants me to say the name, but an 85-year-old Arlington resident who unfortunately was struck and killed up in the Heights around 6:00, 7:00 PM by Trader Joe's on Mass Ave, I believe. So obviously condolences. And previously, I had brought up another Arlington elderly resident, Bill Dotson, but had permission to do that many, many years ago to do that. And I just bring it up on the new business that there's nothing that I can ask for right now in terms of an update, because it is an ongoing investigation between the District Attorney's Office and the Arlington Police Department. But I know, as a matter of course, that when those two concurrent investigations have concluded concerning the Arlington Police Department and their findings, Chief Flaherty and or our town manager, Mr. Feeney, will certainly, whether it's at a meeting or agenda item, or perhaps more appropriately, email communication to the board concerning what was found. Of course, we've all heard from many residents in terms of their thoughts on remediation and the like. But I don't want to get ahead of myself. So and I I'm just stating the obvious. It's not something that wasn't going to happen anyways. The Chief Chief Flaherty is an excellent chief, as is our town manager, Mr. Feeney. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And Mr. Hellmuth?
No new business.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes, one bit of new business. So back this year, by pop, very popular.
The Polar Plunge?
Which the Polar Plunge, I'm gonna have you all on it next year. But I don't even think it's been around in my time on the board. But Mrs. Mahan will certainly remember Mr. Greeley and his select tones. So the number of residents of our some of our housing authority buildings have been asking recently if we're ever going to revive the select tones. So we have two dates on the books, Tuesday, December 17th, at Winslow, and Thursday, December 19th, at Drake Village, under the musical direction of the amazing Patty Kramer, with help maybe by any musically inclined members of the Select Board. So I am inviting board members who can join on one or two nights to come and participate. It's a fun event. It's well attended. I attended a few as a younger guy, much before I was on the Select Board myself. But I think it'll be a good event to bring it back in. It's fun. And certainly in honor of Mr. Greeley, who that it was near and dear to his heart. And he certainly stepped up for the select tone events. So again, if any of my fellow members or town staff are able to participate, we'll be reaching out to some of some former members to fill some of the spaces as well. So be on notice. We'll be looking for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And and just briefly, I had given the board an update last meeting. I thought tomorrow night was going to be the last night of the hearing for Mugar before the Conservation Commission. That has been continued once again. And I'm told it's because the applicant is still working on responses to concerns that were raised by the experts for the Arlington Land Trust. So I said I would come back with an update. That is now scheduled for December 19th. I do want to repeat, and I don't want to sound like a broken record. But again, this goes back to 2015. Here we are in what should have been the closing days. And there's still questions that can't be answered by by the applicant in terms of some of the groundwater issues and storage groundwater storage issues. So that is due to take place on December 19th. That would be a meeting to attend. Again, all of us have been opposed to that project all along. We respect the work of the Conservation Commission. But I continue to be amazed that we heard over and over, following both the ZBA process and the Conservation Commission process statements by the applicant, that they had it all figured out, and they still don't have it figured out. So we'll we'll see what happens on December 19th. So with that, that will conclude my new business. And I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Move your adjourn?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hellmuth, seconded by Mr. Hurd, in favor of adjournment.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.